Audience, please be seated.
Since it is the first meeting of an unnumbered year, we always get to begin with something pretty special. Administering the oath of office to the two winners of the election last November, Carrie Moore and Gary Severson. City Administrator Volkers will be leading us in the, leading them in the oath of office. Council members, they're going to do it right here behind us. Let's fan out to the side, grab our chairs with us, and they can get started.
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Carrie Moore.
I, Carrie Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the ordinances of the City of Oakdale.
And the ordinances of the City of Oakdale.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
For the City of Oakdale.
For the City of Oakdale.
For the term.
For the term.
For which I've been elected.
For which I've been elected.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Gary, come on down.
Right then, repeat after me. I, Gary Severson.
I, Gary Severson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the ordinances of the City of Oakdale.
And the ordinances of the City of Oakdale.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
For the City of Oakdale.
For the City of Oakdale.
For the term for which I've been elected.
For the term for which I've been elected.
To the best.
To the best.
Of my judgment and ability.
Of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Carrie and Gary, if you'd like to take any photos with family, this is a great time.
Down there, up here?
You can do it up here if you like, wherever, up to you. Family joining us?
Yep. If I can convince any of them to join.
Oh, just use the gavel, hit them with it. Come on, everybody. He only gets to do this once every four years. Gary, center. With the flags behind you. With the flags behind you.
Count of three, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Carrie, Gary, I know I speak for my city council colleagues as well as the residents of Oakdale when I say how excited we are to have you both here. We have a lot of work in front of us, and you both bring very valuable and unique experience to this job. So I am personally, and I know my colleagues are, very excited to get to work with you. So, welcome.
Thank you.
First up on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Council members, we have a slightly amended version in front of us tonight. One little tweak on our admin report. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Next up is the approval of the, approval of minutes. We have two sets in front of us tonight. First up, workshop meeting minutes from December 10th, 2024. Council members, any changes or corrections? I'll look for motion.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
Perfect, thank you, Gary. And those minutes are approved. Next up, regular meeting minutes from December 10th, 2024. Any changes or corrections, council members? I'll look for motion.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
I abstain.
Thank you, Gary. All right, those meeting minutes are approved as presented. Introductions, we don't get to have this section on here very often. So we want to take a minute to recognize those joining us from Troop 580 tonight. A big thank you for coming out when it's so cold. We really appreciate having you here, kicking your year off with us. Also kicking our year off, I like that, I like this tradition. So would the troops like to come up and introduce themselves at the podium? I am actually going to delegate handing out pins to our new acting mayor, since he's also involved with the troops. You can head on down there, feel free to join us at the podium. State your name and rank into the microphone. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Gabe Morecambe, and I am the Scout Master for Troop 7580.
Hello, I'm Urban Beak, and I'm Scout Master for Troop 9580.
I'm Liam Schmidt, I'm Star Rank for Troop 9580.
I'm Carter Rucci, I'm Life Rank for Troop 9580.
Welcome.
I'm Colton Beak, and I am Star Rank for 9580.
I'm Simon Leone, and I'm First Class Rank for Troop 580.
I am Joseph Schmidt, and I am Life Rank for Troop 580.
Thank you all for being here. Council, let's go down and grab a photo with the, with the troop. We'll grab a photo in front here.
Count of three, one, two, three. One, two, three. A little more elevation. One, two, three. Thank you.
Alrighty, next up on the agenda, public hearing. We have a PUD amendment for the 3M Imation PUD. Staff presentation, Community Development Director Andy Getzlove, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll give the, the presentation tonight on, on this item. This PUD amendment request is to enable the placement of a new pylon sign near the Superior Third Party Logistics Site at 3490 Hayward Avenue North. The applicant is requesting flexibility from the city zoning regulations stall 50-foot pylon sign containing two sign faces. Each sign face would be 350 square feet. The request exceeds the city's zoning standards, which allows for a 30-foot tall sign and 150 square feet per side. Pylon signs are also only allowed in commercially zoned property, whereas the forefront is actually, it's, it's a PUD, and it's a mix of underlying districts, including research and development, light manufacturing, office showroom, office warehouse use. And the intent behind the sign is to take advantage of that high visibility from, from 694 that would be adjacent, that'd be adjacent to the sign. The PUD zoning does enable a greater level of flexibility, provided that public benefit is derived from requested deviations. Staff does find that the request for the pylon sign is acceptable, given that it's placed away from existing signage on the forefront campus. The design elements, material appear consistent with existing signage, appear of high quality. And this sign helps to have a more comprehensive approach to the campus. There's some pictures of other directional signage and the overall branding to help people navigate within there, and also to identify the campus as a destination. If the PUD amendment is approved, applicant would need a building permit for the use. MinDOT also took a look at the application, noted that any illumination should be kept at reasonable levels and not distract drivers on the interstate. Planning Commission held their public hearing December 5th, there were no, there were no comments. Commission recommended approval. Again, staff is recommending approval of the request. Happy to take any questions. The applicant is here as well, and I'll just remind councilists, there's a, there's a public hearing here tonight that will need to be opened.
Council members, any questions for Andy? How about questions for the applicant? All right, we're going to just roll right into the public hearing. In a minute, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this agenda item only, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and proceed with your comments. House rules for public hearing asks that you limit your comments to three minutes in total. And, you know, golden rule, be nice. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. As I stated, if anybody wants to speak to this item, please feel free to step up to the podium. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for council consideration. Council members, any final questions, or should we jump right into action? All right, I'll look for motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 943 pertaining to the 3M Imation Plan Unit Development to allow a pylon sign at 3490 Hayward Avenue North.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And ordinance number 943 is adopted. Next up, oh, thank you, Andy. Next up is open forum. Before we open up the floor, I do have a few items to cover. First is a proclamation, recognizing National Law Enforcement Day. Whereas in 2015, partnering organizations in support of law enforcement officers nationwide established January 9th as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And whereas law enforcement officers of every rank and file have chosen a profession that puts their life on the line every day for their communities. And whereas these officers have answered a call to public service that is demanding and often unappreciated. And whereas law enforcement officers play an integral part in society by protecting and serving. And whereas on National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, residents have the opportunity to thank them for their service and offer a token of respect. And whereas, all residents are called upon to take time, not only on January 9th, but throughout the entire month of January, to show their appreciation for law enforcement officers. Therefore, I, Kevin Zabel, Mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim January 9th as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day in the City of Oakdale. Oakdale is incredibly fortunate to have the finest police department in the entire state, led by Chief Newton, all the way through every single rank in that organization or that department. Chief Newton, on behalf of the city, on behalf of our residents, we say thank you. We do not say it nearly enough for all that you and your officers do for this city every single day of the year. So we appreciate it. Please share our appreciation with your department as well, but thank you. I also want to offer some recognition to two outgoing city advisory commissioners. First up, Carrie Moore. She, upon taking her oath of office for city council, resigned her seat on the Oakdale Parks Commission. So Carrie Moore was appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission last year shortly after moving to Minnesota. During her time, she provided valuable insight on the city's park system plan and the commission's work plan. When not reading packet material or attending a meeting, Carrie enjoyed getting out in the community, frequenting the farmer's market and indoor market, and many other recreation department-sponsored events throughout the year. Carrie is a strong proponent of getting involved in her community, and has worked hard to get to know Oakdale's park system and recreation offerings. Recently, Carrie was elected to the Oakdale City Council, which required her resignation from the Parks and Rec Commission. Her service to the city is not ending, but merely evolving, and it's going to be a lot more. On behalf of the city council, the city's Park and Rec Commission, and our residents, thank you, Carrie, for your service on the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you.
Since both of these are for both of you, let me just read both, and then we'll go down there and present them, and we can take a little group photo. How about that? Gary is leaving the Economic Development Commission. Gary Severson was appointed to the Economic Development Commission in 2021. Throughout his time, he has helped shape the format, structure, and procedures of the city's Business Retention, Expansion, and Attraction Program, the BRIA Program, provided valuable input on important city projects, including the Comprehensive Zoning and Subdivision Update, the Glenbrook Small Area Plan, Oakdale Development, Oakdale's Development Map, the 12th and Geneva Redevelopment Study, the Park System Plan, and the city's Bike and Pedestrian Plan. He has been an unwavering voice, or unwavering member of the EDC, and continues that dedication to Oakdale as he takes a seat on the Oakdale City Council. Gary, on behalf of the city council, the Economic Development Commission, and the city, and our residents, we thank you for your three years of dedicated service. Let's go take a picture, and we can present the certificates. We're getting our steps in tonight.
Yeah.
Count of three, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
We are still under open forum, so this is a part of the agenda that we like to just open up the floor. Anybody in the audience that would like to share whatever's on your mind, please feel free to step up to the podium. Similar to the public hearing, state your name and address for the record, and share whatever you're thinking about. Seeing none, we're going to keep going and move into consensus motions. First meeting of the year, there's always a lot of them. So we have motions A through L tonight. Council members, are there any of the motions that you would like to pull for individual consideration? Seeing none, I'll look for motion.
Make a motion to approve consensus motions A through L as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, final conversation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And consensus motions are approved. Next up is opportunity to check in with our advisory boards and commissions. Before we do that, we have one action item in front of us. At our work session before this, we tackled the board-commission liaison assignments for 2025, as well as other assignments to commission, or to boards and commissions that the city participates in. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to affirm the 2025 appointments for council liaisons, and designate Council Member Morecambe as acting mayor for 2025, as noted in the attachment. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those appointments are affirmed. No meetings? Eh, it's the holidays. You know, we took some time off, that's fine. But our boards and commissions will be gearing up for a very busy year, so we will be interacting with them shortly. No award bids tonight, so we're going to slide right into staff reports. Community Development has one CUP. Mr. Getzlove. Somehow you ended up on the other side of the room. Switching it up, it's a new year. All right. You're welcome to sit over there if you want, I mean, we've got chairs everywhere.
I want to get that comfortable. Okay.
Take it away.
The item before you here is for a conditional use permit for home occupation, a dental workshop at 4066 Goodwin Avenue North. And the site is Zone R1, home occupations are allowed through conditional use permit process. The applicant is seeking formal approval to continue operating a dental workshop specializing in making crowns and dentures. The business operations are contained within the applicant's garage. The applicant describes the use as being similar in nature to a woodshop or a jewelry repair business. Special equipment for the business includes polishing machines, suction units, and molds. There are no reported customer visits on the site, as the applicant picks up and drops off his products at the dental office. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request on December 5th. At the hearing, there was one neighbor that voiced concerns about the use, particularly on noise, noise and event on the, on the garage, while two other neighbors stated that there are no noticeable indications that the business was located there. And staff has done an external inspection, and also didn't notice any thing out of the ordinary going on at the, at the, at the location. At the Planning Commission, they did end up recommending approval of the request. As you're aware, CUPs are subject to certain review criteria found in, found in the ordinance. Staff finds the CUP criteria have been satisfied, as detailed in the Planning Commission staff report. Staff does recommend approval of this request, subject to following conditions. One is hour of operation, shall be from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM Sunday through Saturday, and these are hours that the applicant was, had proposed and was comfortable with. No more than one outside worker shall be employed for the use, which is the maximum allowed by code. All sign-ins for the use shall comply with ordinance requirements. And lastly, if applicable, the applicant shall obtain and maintain any required approvals or licenses from state or federal government agencies to, to operate the, the use. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't believe the applicant is here tonight.
Council members, any questions for Andy? Alrighty. Were there any questions for the applicant that staff may be able to answer? All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2025-01, approving a conditional use permit for a home occupation dental workshop at 4066 Goodwin Avenue North, with conditions included in the attached resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Resolution 2025-01 is adopted. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Next up is our opportunity to check in with Jim, our city attorney. Jim, welcome, happy new year, anything for us?
Happy new year, nothing specific to report tonight, but happy to answer questions.
Council members, any questions for Jim? And turn to your right, check in with our city administrator, Chris Volkers. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm going to ask Assistant City Administrator Jake Foster, there he is, to come up and go over our legislative priorities. We did discuss this in workshop. The reason why it's right on the agenda is we clarified instead of past tense current language for the LGA section, it was referencing in the reverse. So we fixed that, and I will let Jake take it away.
That's correct. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As City Administrator Volkers mentioned, the one change made to the local government aid section isn't really substantive, which is more grammatical than anything. You have a printed copy of the most up-to-date proposed version in front of you that includes that language that has been updated for the LGA section. So the legislative priorities are exactly what they sound, they're kind of focus legislative areas that the city supports. There are Oakdale focused, East Metro and statewide focused priorities. These will be shared with our elected officials at the legislature, and also sort of guide any sort of, you know, focus we would have in terms of, you know, things that happen at the state legislature. As Administrator Volkers mentioned, this was discussed at the December 10th workshop, so early, or late last year, excuse me. The only things that have changed in addition to that rewording of the LGA section are the removal of the language relating to preemptive local zoning authority, so there just wasn't consensus amongst council on there, so that was something that was removed. Furthermore, there was language relating to a tax exemption for construction materials relating to our police facility expansion. City staff learned of an exemption that we could already take advantage of, so that was essentially unnecessary and removed from the document. Furthermore, the other thing, that, one thing that was changed, there was language relating to noise walls along Interstate 694. They had some pretty specific language relating to the areas in which the wall could be or should be constructed. That was just moved to make more of a general sort of guidelines as to just anything that abuts a residential neighborhood along I-694. And then the last thing that was changed was some added language relating to requesting an extension for the city's use of unobligated tax increment financing revenue. So we do have a project in the queue. I think Andy and staff would say it's likely, we feel confident that it's going to go forward with construction. However, those funds would need to be expended by the end of the year, if not. And if anything were to happen, construction were to delay, the project were to fall through, we would lose the ability to use those funds. So we simply would be asking for an extension in the use of those funds. And I think with that, that pretty much covers any of the changes, so if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Council members, any questions for Jake? Any questions for Chris? All right, let's look for a motion.
I move to approve the City of Oakdale 2025 legislative priorities as outlined in the attached document.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the legislative priorities is adopted. Jake, thank you. Thank you, Chris. Chris, anything else under admin report?
Unless I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council members, any questions for Chris? Alrighty, council presentations. Anybody want to go first tonight? Let's just look down here, do we have anything over here?
Nothing for me.
Carrie, anything?
No.
Alrighty, have it over here. Gary?
Nothing. I had one.
Absolutely.
And I'm not sure if you've got it covered already.
Probably.
Probably do, right? But in partnership with Washington County, we now have a prescription drug, drug drop-off box here at City Hall, which is something that's been getting worked on for a long time, but it's a resource to residents, so please come and drop off your prescription drugs, because we don't want them in the garbage or anywhere else, we want to take care of our community.
I do not have that.
Hey, alright.
But I also want to commend Councilman Morecambe, this has been something that you brought to the table a while ago, and you've been relentless on getting this done, which is fantastic. It is a real need in every community, making sure that unused or unneeded prescription drugs are being disposed of properly. So having another option for our residents to, to do that, right here at City Hall, very important. So thank you for that, thank you to our staff who made that happen, and our partners at the county. So we know this was a lot of red tape to navigate, but we got it done, which is great. I have a number of updates. Like I said before, it's our first meeting in 2025. It was fantastic having four weeks off between our last meetings and over the holidays. But we are back, we are raring to go for what will be a very, very busy year. So on behalf of the city, I want to thank, or I want to wish our residents a very happy new year, a year of happiness, success, and prosperity. So we look forward to serving you all throughout 2025, and please feel free to reach out if you need anything. Good news, as of last Thursday, our three skating rinks are now open, East Side, Walton Pleasure Rink, and Walton Hockey Rink. Mother Nature is finally cooperating, especially after last year, that is a very good sign. All outdoor. All outdoor hockey, or rinks are maintained, supervised rinks with heated warming houses. The rink hours are Monday through Friday from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. Should that be the warming house hours? Because the rinks are always open. Yeah, the, the warming house hours are Monday through Friday, 4:00 to 8:00 PM, Saturday, 12:00 to 8:00, and Sunday, 12:00 to 7:00. So we hope everybody takes the opportunity to get out and enjoy those hockey rinks while we can, because you never quite know when it's going to warm up and wreck the ice. So also, a note, if it does warm up, we really appreciate it if residents can keep off of the ice, so our public works crews can repair it. So I know often there's, there's an itch to get back out there the second we have a cold morning, but often it takes a day or two for public works to get out there and build a good thick layer of ice. So patience is always appreciated if you see signs posted saying, give us a little bit more time. Stop by the Oakdale Indoor Market at the Discovery Center this Saturday, January 25th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There will be more than 20 local vendors offering a unique variety of items, so come on out, shop local, support them, always a great variety of items. Also, just kind of a fun opportunity to hang out at the Discovery Center. Very exciting news, we have a new transit option covering parts of Oakdale called Metro Micro. It is a service available through microtransit. Metro Micro is a shared ride service using ADA-accessible minibuses. You can book a ride through the free mobile app or by phone. The cool thing about it is they pick you up where you want, they drop you off where you, where you want, anywhere within the service area for one flat rate. So it's a really cool option to expand accessibility and transportation in our community. You can get more information on Metro Transit's website, metrotransit.org/micro-woodbury. And we probably have a link to that on our city website, so you can just find the link there, that'll be easier. Public Works is still disposing of natural Christmas trees for residents through the end of the month. If you have your tree up yet, I'm guessing it's pretty crispy. But if you do and you want to have Public Works dispose of it for you, they will chop it up, they'll turn it into mulch. You can bring it down to the Public Works Campus at 1900 Hadley Avenue North. There's a minimal cost of $3 per tree to drop it off, just pop into the office, pay the fee, they'll point to where to go to drop off the tree and you're good to go. So the Public Works Campus is open Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM. A reminder that city offices and facilities will be closed on Monday, January 20th, in observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. Staff will be back to resume regular hours on Tuesday. Finally, I want to offer a big congratulations to anybody that's been taking an oath of office throughout the month of January, public service. It, it's getting harder and harder to find people willing to dedicate the time necessary to do this very important work. And so when people do raise their hand and offer to serve and take their oath of office, it is something that's very special. So to all of the elected officials at the federal, state, county, city, school board, any level, thank you for offering to serve, agreeing to serve, taking those very important oaths to your community. We all truly appreciate the work that you all do. We got a lot of bills to pay. Unintended consequence of taking four weeks off, so we have two claims rosters in front of us tonight. First up, December 11th through December 24th, in the amount of 1.52 million and change. Council members, were there any claims on there that you wanted to flag? All right, can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve claims as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that claims roster is approved. Next up, we have a claims roster for December 25th, 2024, through January 14th, 2025, in the amount of $8 million and change. That may be the largest in my time here. Got to pay that debt service, so. Council members, any claims you'd like to flag? All right, I'll look for motion.
Make a motion to approve claims as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that claims roster is approved. I'm going to break the agenda a little bit. I see our county commissioners joining us tonight. Stan, welcome. Anything, you want some microphone time?
I just.
Come on up. You must be hitting all the rounds with all the cities in your district.
Thank you, Mayor. I just came, I did have to go to Birchwood, but I'd seen their swearing and I couldn't get down here, there's, you can flick, but there is a state representing Birchwood and I represent Birchwood. Making the rounds, it's segue off of what you said, Mayor Zabel. It's really important to be elected, it's an honor, each day you get up, you should, it's really a privilege to serve. So congratulations, Council Member Severson and Council Member Moore, so, and wish you all a New Year's, you got a good council, so just here to observe and.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Any questions of the county?
Can we have some money?
I'll go print some.
All right, thank you. For our residents, County Commissioner Karwoski was once again elected to chair the board, the Washington County Board, so second year in a row, third year during your tenure?
Yes.
Fantastic. So Stan is always a tremendous resource for our residents, if anybody, any residents need anything from county government, and having him wield the gavel just makes Oakdale even more special. So congratulations, Stan, thanks for coming tonight. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
No move.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you and good night.